Twenty-two, if everybody could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. This is English Schmidt, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Here.
Here.
Deanne.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
Mayor Calendino.
Here. One missing, and we have a quorum, thank you. At this time in the meeting, we open the floor for public comments for any item that is on the agenda. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak to an item on the agenda? Nope. Consent business, council members, in your packet was all the information for the items that are listed under consent business. If everyone is okay with the items being in consent, I would be looking for a motion to approve the consent business.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent business as presented.
Support.
Motion by Deanne, support by Soccora. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Soccora.
Yes.
Franzi, O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries, new business. First item is the Deputy Chief Contract. In your packet is the contract for our Deputy Chief Position. Chief Cody, would you like to address this at all?
The agenda item summary that you guys have before you, as you indicated, it's something that we have been planning for in this current year budget, twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget. The purpose of the Deputy Chief's position is to create a chain of command and lays out a succession plan for our city moving forward. This has been forwarded to the council and we've kind of worked on it with the city attorney, moving back and forth, and we've come to an agreement on this contract. That's my request, that motion be forwarded to approve the Deputy Chief's contract as submitted.
I will make that motion to approve this contract.
Support.
Motion by Soccora, support by O'Donnell. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Soccora.
Yes.
Franzi, O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. And the second motion, chief?
That's the only motion I have before me now. We're going to move to a swearing in, and throw in a sergeant Kalusny, Deputy Chief. If I have just a few moments for some words?
Absolutely, chief.
Mayor, council, I want to thank you for your support in this matter. Obviously, it's been a long time in planning. As I indicated, it was spoken about when we started our budget time. This is one of the more cherished opportunities I get to celebrate throughout my career as chief, is anytime somebody gets an opportunity to be promoted within the department. Matt Kalusny was hired into the department in two thousand and five. In two thousand and seventeen, he achieved the position of Sergeant. Matt has set a number of goals for himself, one of them being to achieve a master's degree in public administration. He accomplished this while he was working midnights, raising a family. Everybody can understand that moving through those types of things is very difficult. Obviously, it takes a lot of your time when you're working midnights, there's no sleep, you're up during the days, obviously attending classes. Throughout his career, Matt has been selected to become a Utica Police Department Defensive Tactics Instructor, a county SWAT team member, a field training officer, and a drug recognition expert. Most recently, Matt was accepted as a candidate to attend the FBI National Academy, a very prestigious opportunity for law enforcement. It's reserved for only the highest available administrators. Matt has taken on a more administrative role by managing information systems of the department. He's done records and training, scheduling, and continues to manage a lot of the administrative portions of this department. I've supervised Matt since he's joined the department, and I have observed both his dedication to the city and the department. I'm proud to see Matt get an opportunity to attain the position that he has strived for. I'm confident that as Deputy Chief, Matt will serve the department and the citizens with honor and professionalism. I look forward to seeing the department move forward with his leadership, momentum, and strive to improve. I'm excited to see Matt be promoted to the rank of Deputy Chief and to begin this new chapter of his career. Thank you.
One last time, Sergeant Kalusny, could you meet me up here?
Yes, mayor.
For the purposes of the picture, we agreed to remove our masks, just so everyone in the public knows myself and Sergeant Kalusny and his wife. Raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I'll support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
The Charter.
The Charter.
For the City of Utica.
For the City of Utica.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
And the general orders.
And the general orders.
Of the Utica Police Department.
Of the Utica Police Department.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Deputy Police Chief.
Of Deputy Police Chief.
For the City of Utica.
For the City of Utica.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Your wife, right?
Yes. Yes.
Will be pinning your badge on today. I'm sure she's going to do a much better job than I would.
I already practiced. I'm going to mess it up.
Congratulations, Deputy Chief.
Congratulations, well deserved.
And thank you to everybody who showed up to celebrate this night for Deputy Chief Kalusny. I'm sure he appreciates everybody being in attendance tonight, thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Oh, didn't want to stay. When you're talking about the budget later, you guys want to stick around.
Exciting stuff.
So much, so much fun. Just kidding. No, catch it on YouTube, serious.
Riveting stuff.
Thanks for coming, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Capacity crowd now.
All right, next on the agenda is the USPBL Annual Fireworks Review and Request. We have Ms. Dana Schmidt here, representing USPBL.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much, and council. This is our annual meeting where we come and review fireworks that we had for the prior season during two thousand and twenty-one. So I guess the first piece is, I think that we did comply with the prior year's requirements of making sure that we start the fireworks no later than ten-thirty. We did have to stop the game a couple of times to make sure that we did that. We also had two games this year for the first time that got rained out. And so unfortunately, that's never happened in any of the prior years, but as everybody knows, we had so much rain last summer that we had two of our Friday games that we were not able to play and not able to do the fireworks. So today, we're presenting our schedule for the two thousand and twenty-two season, which was submitted with the dates, which would be, our opening day is May twentieth this year, the championship game is on September eleventh, and we would be looking to do the fireworks for the Friday games, after each Friday game, as well as Sunday, July third. We would be playing a night game and doing fireworks, that would be our Fourth of July fireworks, we would not be playing on the Fourth this year. And so one request is that we are able to proceed with our normal schedule, that's the same dates that we've done every other year. And then the second request is because we had that instance of these rainouts that happened last year, we had been making requests during the season to see if we could make the makeup, those rainouts, trying to reschedule customers to different dates. And so the request would be for approval of two rain makeup days per season where the fireworks could be held the next day following a rainout game. So those are the two requests.
Excellent. Dana, I noticed in years past, we usually got the applicant, or whatever it is, the permit from the fireworks vendor that you use?
They come in after.
Okay.
We have this meeting and then they apply for the permit.
Okay.
Okay.
And I would just back up what you said, I didn't, it certainly seems like you adhered to all the restrictions that were put upon you for fireworks. I personally didn't receive any complaints about those specific items, you know, about times or duration, anything like that. So Ms. Schmidt would be looking for a motion to approve her schedule for two thousand and two fireworks at Jimmy John's Field.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Ryan. Boy, it makes it tough when you've got these masks.
I know, right? Yeah, you got it.
Any discussion from council?
So by count, you're asking for eighteen days?
Yes.
What did we have in the past, was it eighteen, was it fifteen, was it seventeen?
No, it was actually more because we, the last two years, we've reduced the number of weeks. In twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and twenty nineteen, we started at the beginning of May, so we had more Fridays. Last year, we, because of COVID, we didn't start until Memorial Day. So, and then this year, we're starting just one week earlier, but in prior twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, what, twenty nineteen, we started like the first full weekend of May, or the second full weekend of May. So we would start typically two weeks earlier than we're starting this year. So there would have been two more, depends on how the Fourth of July falls, but yes, there would have been two more fireworks in the past.
Anything further?
No.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Soccora.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. And Ms. Schmidt's second motion is to allow for two makeup fireworks events per season to be held after a rainout game. So that would always be a Saturday night then, right? Unless it was the, well, July third, you said, it would always have to be the very next night after a rainout.
Right, we don't have a game scheduled on July fourth this year, so we wouldn't be able to make that one up if it got rained out, because we wouldn't have a game the next day.
Okay. Motion from council?
So moved, sir.
Support.
Motion by Deanne, support by O'Donnell, discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Soccora.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Any other updates for us, while we've got you here, on the season coming up? I see your, the schedule's out, how's things looking?
I'm optimistic. We're tracking a little bit ahead of where we were last year at this time. Hopefully, Omicron goes away, but you know, we're hiring salespeople back, we're hiring marketing people back, and planning to make the type of sales and marketing investments that we normally would. And last year, we weren't in that same position because we didn't know if we were going to have full capacity, we were planning unlimited, and as we know, it went to full capacity on very short notice, so you know, just working hard to make sure that we can get back to full attendance. We probably were only about seventy percent of what's normal last year, so that's our goal.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
So stop coughing at each other. Essentially, that's the, that's the rub.
Next on the agenda is our parking lot ordinance, Mr. Peown left us. This really came about because of several complaints we had from business owners in the city about adjacent property owners not taking care of their parking lot. In several instances, when we did try to enforce repairs on said parking lots, our code enforcement officer really had no recourse because our ordinance, as currently written, was too vague and just didn't have the teeth required to get the job done. So I asked our planning commission to draft a parking lot ordinance. They did a fantastic job, very productive couple of meetings we had as we worked out some of the differences. We also had our city attorney, our county planner, as well as our code enforcement officer slash building inspector review it, and it is before you in the package. So tonight, we would be looking for a motion to adopt the parking lot ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, oh, sorry. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the parking lot ordinance as presented.
Support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Soccora. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote?
Soccora.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. And are you Joe from DUCs?
You got it.
In case you don't have a copy, I'll give you mine. And is that Monique?
Yes, thank you.
Nice to see you today.
Monique, I know that you guys dealt with that in the past with a neighbor that was not as fastidious about maintaining their property.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that'll be a thing.
Hopefully, this can help kind of take care of that problem.
Now, the reality of the situation is we probably won't be able to get much done until early spring. Asphalt typically can't, Mr. Lang could probably speak to this more intelligently than me, I believe it's what, fifty degrees or so?
I believe it's this time of year the asphalt plans are closed.
Right.
Right. That'll do it. We're fully aware of how all that works since we've been dealing with this for so long.
Right.
Right.
So we, we understand, or I am grateful that we've gotten this far on this and let's start.
Yeah, we've been fighting it.
Well, we-
Over this for quite a while now, so.
As you can see, it makes a difference when you reach out to us, you know, with concerns or questions.
Worked out good.
You know, when you've got issues, let the city know, and you know, we're pretty proactive, we try to fix things, we try to make things work.
And you guys have done such a great job with the whole city, I mean downtown Utica, a lot of the neighborhoods, I mean, there are really some, a lot of work being done. Things look great, but I just feel like we got this ice sore stuck with us, and right on Van Dyke there, I mean, to me, I hate to say it, but it looks like going down eight miles sometime, so this is going to be great, that'll be great.
Excellent.
Unfortunately, both of our neighbors, the dry cleaner next to me and then the party store area, neither of those people are in their buildings, so they don't feel that they should have to maintain it, which they have said to me, they don't see why they have to maintain it, why they have to clean the, pay to help have the snow removed or keep their sidewalks clean because they don't use it. Yeah. We don't get it, we just want us all to look good.
Yeah, no kidding, right? If they don't want to take care of it, then sell it, simple as that.
That strip center was always maintained by everyone, and everyone got along well. I don't know what, what happened years ago, but it just fell.
Well, hopefully, we're on a path now to getting that fixed.
It's a good start.
Yes, it's a great start, thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you, folks, for coming in tonight and sharing your input with us, it's very important. All right, next on the agenda is the Utica Puppy Parade. As we all know, our billboard company requires like a four-month lead to reserve the billboard, so I'm trying to get approvals on that as early as possible. Last year, we held our first puppy parade, by all accounts, it was a pretty huge success. We did this in concert with Proclaiming April as Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Month. We also had really good involvement from the Humane Society of McComb, Detroit Pit Crew Dog Rescue, and Sterling's Legacy. This year, tentative date would be Saturday, April thirtieth at 2:00 PM. Because of the kind of unpredictable weather in spring, I tried to pick the last possible Saturday in April, as you know, April is the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Month. Hopefully, by going with the last Saturday, you know, we'll have nice weather. Just like last year, the event would begin at Grant Park and proceed downhill to Pioneer Park. We very graciously had the support of police and fire escort last year, we'd be asking for the same services this year as well, so that we can close Van Dyke just for that few minutes to get people across, you know, that are traversing Han. So at this point, I would be looking for a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-two Utica Puppy Parade on April thirtieth.
So moved.
Motion by Soccora.
Support.
Support by Townsend, any discussion from council?
I'm going next week to look at two dogs to adopt.
Just for this?
Not just for this. You're going all out. Coincides quite nicely.
Bring your pups in, all of you, bring their dogs, and we have treats up in the office.
Ooh, there you go. Right. So now I have to get ingrained into dog owner culture, you know? It's like a whole thing.
I'll bring JJ.
Celebrity appearance.
Yes. Celebrity appearance, JJ.
Any further discussion, folks? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Soccora.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries, thank you, everybody, I look forward to making this an even bigger and better event than it was last year. Department reports, I'll kick things off. I'd like to express my condolences to both Councilman O'Donnell and Building Inspector Jerry Hicks, who lost family members this week. We all hope that two thousand and twenty-one, you know, the sorrow is left behind, unfortunately, we're having a rough start in two thousand and twenty-two. My thoughts are with you and Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, mayor.
I've been asked to give an update on Venker, the turnaround construction. We don't have a lot of information, maybe Mr. Lang might have more information than I do. My last conversation with MDOT was that the construction actually has started, they put the lights in place, they're, they said the lights will be done over the winter, and they're going to do the construction in spring. I also was asked, what is the status of the light at Custer and the light just east of Van Dyke? We haven't heard that there's any plans to remove the light at Custer, but the turnaround and light east of Van Dyke, I believe, is going away, from my understanding. So the new Venker light and turnaround will replace, would that be at Deschamps, I guess?
Deschamps, Deschamps Flatlight.
The light and turnaround at Deschamps. The new turnaround is going to be one of, an expanded, turnaround's going to have an extra lane, so hopefully, that will move traffic better than the current Deschamps turnaround. We've had a few residents contact the office that they're very happy about this development, and some that are not. We really don't have a ton of control over, it's an MDOT managed project, and we'll see how things go.
Just my fear, living on clean cameras, if they got rid of the Custer turnaround in the morning, arrow though, that whole area of subdivision up to the, will never get out of their sub.
Right.
It, it'll be non-existent, it's hard enough now.
Yeah.
The way it is now with the light pushed way, way, you know, west of us.
Yeah, because I thought of that, I thought, oh, it might be kind of nice not to have it on my street anymore, but then I would never be able to get out on Fifty-Nine, ever. Yep.
Mr. Lang?
I mean, I think I can add to that, I don't believe that they'll get rid of the light at Custer, I think, and you can quote me, but it's, it's a hypothetical, from what I can recall, the, the light at Custer was, is there at a request of the City of Utica, so I believe it would only go away at our request, or for some other purpose. We currently pay for that light, so, yes, that light, because it services, it was there at our request, so we actually pay for that one.
Okay.
So I don't think that that would go away unless we requested it to go away, and nor I seen or heard anything of the like, so.
Great, thank you.
That's what I believe, I, you know, anyway.
And no one from the city's requested that to happen, and I'm not.
No, correct.
Correct. Very good. And as we're just starting two thousand and twenty-two, I'd like just to quickly read through some of council's accomplishments from two thousand and twenty-one. It was an extremely busy year, I think we got an amazing amount of things done, and I'm proud of our achievements. That being said, let's keep up the hard work and make two thousand and twenty-two even more productive. Some of the good things we got done, we adopted a noise ordinance and a non-domesticated animal ordinance, both of those resulted from concerns from residents. We completed repairs to the Davis Street Pedestrian Bridge, replaced the damaged and obsolete nine-one-one radio tower and dispatch councils through grants and insurance claims, awarded a grant for a new commercial generator, add a forty thousand dollar benefit to the city. We changed some things in our city council meetings, including the agenda item summary form, which adds transparency for the residents. Also implemented the Utica email newsletter, were able to get twenty-four additions done in two thousand and twenty-one. I'm not going to read everything here. Completed a major traffic study, our police department did, based on feedback from the residents. Our police department initiated a social media policy, purchased and deployed a radar sign that collects data on all our major streets. It's also already been useful in helping our police decide how to make dispatch decisions. We adopted the caregiver marijuana ordinance to prevent nuisance marijuana grow activities in our neighborhoods. We adopted another surplus budget. We reconstructed the Grant Park walking path. We formed the resident graffiti committee to address unwanted graffiti in the city. We had, we whitewashed the Davis Street Tunnel and held the Utica Community Schools Paint the Tunnel Day, completed the DIA-sponsored mural on the fire station at no cost to taxpayers, replaced all our old-style street, residential street signs in the Flickinger neighborhood, completed a large number of sidewalk repairs in downtown, purchased a new ambulance, purchased the new server for our city offices, improved city council meetings by adding information to the broadcasts, completed the reconstruction of the Cass and Auburn Access to Hall Road, repaved Auburn Road from Cass to Van Dyke, negotiated new contracts with our Utica Police Department and Department of Public Works, ensuring the city's financial security by restructuring legacy costs, held the biggest and best Christmas tree light event yet, just a couple of weeks ago. We had Fox Two Detroit Rupraaj and Detroit Red Wing Legend Darren McCarty as guests, and it was an awesome success. And we welcomed some new businesses to Utica, Vinnie's Italian Eatery, Puff, Cloud, Northern Grind Coffee, Front Door Housekeeping, Strategic Wealth Advisors, Funky Town Toys, Sergeant Red's Toys and Collectibles, and Tormina's Pizza. So in all, I'd say we got a lot done last year. Let's keep up the good work, I appreciate everything council did, city staff, department heads, by working together, that's how we get things done. Does anybody else from council have a report?
Want me to go first?
Please.
So I met with the treasurer and the treasurer department this month, and they're trying to make everything more digitally efficient, so they're now going to be able to scan all the bank deposits, scan all the checks with a machine, so that we don't have to go to the bank and then get charged per check processing fees, you know, commercial bank accounts always have to pay extra fees, and they have to pay per check sometimes, so that's going to- So that's gonna be a cost savings to the city there by using that scanner. The other thing that they do is they, the software that they use in the office, they have the ability to scan all the supporting documents now. So a few months ago, we approved for them to get the scanners and now they can scan all the supporting documents on the computer, which they didn't have that ability before. The one thing that they, we would like to get more efficient is when residents pay their water bills or their taxes. Right now, we have four ways that you can pay. You can come into the office and pay it. You can mail and pay it. We have an online processing link that you can do right from our website. There is a fee. You have to pay a fee to use that. And then the fourth way is if you use your personal banking. You know, like my bank, I can pay all my bills online and they don't charge me extra. But what we fail to think about sometimes is when we do it online, we're not gonna have the stub. You know, the, the office will not get the stub for our taxes or for our water bills. So we have to make sure when we set up those online accounts that we include at least our address or our, the account number or your parcel number or something so that they have an identifier. Because sometimes, like with my bank in particular, they actually send a physical check. They don't do it digitally. And so if I don't have that account number put into, you know, my vendor in the software, then the city's getting the check and it just says it's from me and they don't know who it's from. So we only ask to make everything more efficient to try and, even if you write a check and you mail it in, make sure you either have the stub or on the check, write, you know, your address or your phone number or something in case they can't get it matched up with something. It would save a lot of time in the long run. So that's, that's all I have on an update for them. But it was a very productive meeting and I was really glad to see that everybody's trying to be more digitally geared so that we can make things more efficient.
The focus in the city offices has definitely been on increasing efficiency in the way we do things. The scanner that's allowing them to do what you're talking about by scanning in the documents and getting them right into the software. That's a result of some scanners that we approved earlier in the year. So that investment is paying off already with efficiency. So it's good news.
Yep.
Councilman Deon, did you have a comment?
Yeah, so tomorrow I'm gonna be having a meeting with Mark Nicholson. And if you remember his name, he was with the Gazette Media Group. And they brought to town the Fork and Cork Festival. And we, we didn't host it last year, obviously. And I spoke with him and he was excited about the potential of hosting it this year. And a tentative date that we had penciled out between working with Jimmy John's Field and just working, looking at the calendar, could be potentially the last Friday in September and the first Saturday there in October as potential dates. Obviously, that's just working dates as of now. But I'll be meeting with him tomorrow and he's very excited about doing it and he would like to have that opportunity to come before council ultimately and seek approval. So we're gonna meet tomorrow and hopefully that's something that can continue because it was a very fun time. And we'll, we're gonna tighten up a few things that weren't as best as they could be and eliminate a couple of things that, that could have, you know, that weren't as desirable perhaps. Anyways, so there's that. And then also, Mr. Mayor. Today would mark our first council meeting in 2022, which shows that you had a very successful year as mayor in 2021. So congratulations to you on a, on a year, one complete year in office. I think you've done a great job. You've been exceptionally financially responsible. You've done our city proud and I'm very proud to call you our mayor and I'd like to congratulate you on a successful year as a testament to all those things that have gotten done right there. I think it's, you've reflected a great credit upon yourself, our city, and in this council.
Well, I think, you know, without the help of council, obviously, none of it would've gotten done. So thank you for your and everybody else on council's contributions to that. And our department heads and city staff. I mean, it's definitely a group effort, but thank you so much. I gotta say though, I think my bald spot is growing, you know, in one year.
I didn't notice.
My wife's haircuts are getting shorter and shorter, the ones she gives me. So I, something's going on up there. Anyone else from council have any reports?
I started, pardon me, Mr. Mayor. I started working on revisions to the forms that Ms. Lori gave me. Unfortunately, I've had quite the tumultuous last month, so I haven't much done anything. But it's on my agenda or on my to-do list, I should say.
Thank you.
And for mine, I'm still having my monthly meetings with Police and the Fire Chief. And they will share what we talked about in their reports.
Excellent. That being said, Chief Willsack from Fire.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Before you, we have a request to get a motion for a grant which is being offered for $100,000 per jurisdiction for training and recruitment. Hopefully, we can generate some interest and we can also train our own people and recoup the costs if there are approved trainings through the council or through the city, or state council on training. It would be a pay forward and get reimbursed type thing and it's up to $100,000. And it's a total reimbursement.
And would there be, like, there's a guarantee from the state that it's, it's like a preapproval?
We're gonna, we're gonna pre-approve. Yeah, we, every training has to get pre-approved to, that meets their needs or what they're, they're looking for standard-wise. You know, hopefully we can maybe recruit new firefighters and lock them in a little bit. So, and send them to medic school and stuff like that. We don't know the specifics totally yet on what they're going to approve, but we can always deny taking the, the grant. But if we don't apply for it, we can't get it. So we can go from there.
So Chief Willsack would be looking for a motion to allow Captain Orlovsky to apply for the Michigan Department of Treasury Training and Recruitment Grant.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deon, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Any, anything else to report, Chief Willsack?
Oh, no, thank you. Our aerial truck finally got back from, we had some major repairs. As you know, we've been trying to replace that truck and it's a 1990, so do the math. We're keeping it going. Our mechanic here has had his hands full over the last month or so. But we had to send this one out for a major repair. It had to get a new clutch on the PTO and then we had some hydraulic issues again. So it's back and hopefully it'll be up and running by tomorrow, so. And other than that, my hat's off to the guys. I mean, we're running big time again on COVID patients again. And, you know, they have the potential to take that back to their families and they're getting up in the middle of the night and hauling these people in. So just wear your mask, be safe and social distance. I mean, it's, it's bad right now. So, and we're in the snow season. We haven't had much yet. But if we do get that big downfall of snow, please keep your hydrants clean so we can get to them and don't bury them so we can't find them. Be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Police Chief Cody?
Real quick, I guess I just want to, informational. This past week, we did have a resident, elderly resident that ended up going for a walk. He's a recent transplant from out of the country, did not come back in a timely manner. It was, it was thought that he was in a, in a bad state of affairs. With the recent weather changes that we've had, extreme cold, we exhausted every effort to try and locate this individual. He went for a walk. We did everything from canines. We have an aerial drone unit that we have within the department that we deployed that has night vision. It has heat seeker and so forth. We made efforts to look over ponds, trail areas, wooded areas, things like that. Called in the Michigan State Police and this is where things got fun. We had a helicopter come in. I notified the mayor. It was keeping me up to date as to the progress. We had some residents that were a little bit concerned because helicopter, obviously, flying at low altitudes, making use of its technological equipment to try and locate this individual. We exhausted efforts at approximately 1:30 in the morning. It was at that time that we had to notify the family that we had exhausted all efforts. We'd used neighboring communities and had notified them, passed out notifications, pictures and so forth. And the next morning, as we convened to kind of determine what our next step in the process was, he was discovered up by 23 Mile in Van Dyke. He had spent the night outside. He had slept in a couch that was put out at the trash. Seventy-two-year-old male. He was from Albania. He had a good coat and a good pair of shoes on. And so I told my officers, don't complain when the temperature in the department is low because if he can make it all night long, I think we can, we can, we can deal with it. A good ending to what could've been a very sad state of events. The reason I bring it up is that we did have Michigan State helicopter, did, did a little bit of low altitude flying, trying to assist us in that. So that was some disruption to some of our residents. One of our residents took to their yard using a laser pointer and tried to disrupt some of the instrumentation and so forth and flying capabilities of that aircraft. We were able to identify that individual and I just want to notify the public that is a felony and that is not something that's taken lightly. And I just want to also tell the residents, we will extend every effort to find people in these types of situations so that they understand this was an exhaustive effort that was put forward. So that's just a quick update. As far as some of the things that I've discussed with Councilman Ryan, within the department, we're making efforts to try and clean out some of the air ducts, but that's not just for the police department. We're looking at the whole city hall facility. Obviously, with COVID and so forth, my tenure with the city, 25 years, I'm not familiar with any such action ever taking place of cleaning these air ducts. Today, we had an issue with some of our HAVAC systems and he showed me some of the filters and so forth and they are just black. So we're, we're making efforts. We're taking in some of the bidding process to kind of determine what's gonna be the best interest of the city and what will accommodate the, the building as a whole. So that's where we're at with it. With COVID, obviously, as we've indicated, it's kind of slowing some things down. People coming into the, into the station are required to wear masks. Anybody that is taken into custody comes in and out our Sally Port so they're not coming in contact with any people within a work area within our, within our facility. So those are just a couple of quick updates. I wanted to let the residents know. And I just want to thank the Fire Department. We called them out during the search operations and it did not hesitate. They came out extreme cold. Another note to that is some of the fire personnel were able to locate another individual that dementia, individual that is a resident that got away from some of his family members. They weren't attentive enough to see his actions and he made it out into the cold, not dressed appropriately in his underwear as he was making his way down the street. One of the things I have to say is if we weren't in the process of our first rescue attempts, this individual probably would not have been located and reunited with his family as quickly. But that was through the efforts of the Fire Department and so forth. So there was a good, good outcome on both ends of that. So that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and great job on that. Those recovery efforts by both police and fire, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Mr. Lang, DPW report?
Really no report from DPW. The only thing I want to elaborate a little bit on was the comment that I made that asphalt plants are closed. Actually, they are for hot patch. Cold patch is still accessible this time of year. So in the event that we're moving forward, you see big complaints or you wanted to pursue something like that. You know, where cold patch is not the ideal solution, it, it certainly will work. So just to make clear on that, that yeah, there are patches that are available, so thank you.
And I know you guys are still combating all the water main break issues. Tough time of the year to have to be doing that, but we appreciate all your, all your parts.
Yeah, they, actually, we'll be back out on Kemp Street tomorrow. There's a balmy high of 38 forecasted, so we picked that day to go back and, of everything in the forecast, that 38 is the best-looking, you know, in the next quite a while. So we'll be back out on Kemp Street trying to, we have another, we either have another one or a recurrence of the one that we attempted to repair some months ago, so.
Agree. I know we did get at least one call in the office today.
Yeah, we'll be back.
Is this year, it seems like you've been inundated with more than in the past this, or is it, we just didn't hear them in the past? It just seems like you've been hit so often with water main breaks.
Yeah, so this year, yes. This is one of those years.
Okay.
Similarly, I had a year where nine streetlights got knocked down in one year. It's, it's just one of them. We did, we did experience a spike in the meter pit and we, we know that that added to some of the issues that we've seen, but we were gonna find them regardless.
Okay.
So we're hope that, we hope that this is the, you know, the end of it for us, but. So we got four where normally we get one or two.
Yeah.
So, well, and five if you count a return, so you can count it.
Yep.
But yeah, it's, it's just the way it's fallen.
Okay.
We'll, we'll hope that, you know, that was last year. This year's better.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lang.
Thank you.
I don't think we have anything from Treasurer tonight. City Admin, Madam Clerk? All right, I'm gonna try to do this one. This is under our City Attorney's item. Mr. Mayor?
So I've been text messaging with the attorney and she's available via speakerphone. If you'd like to, if you'd like to bring her up. Because she, she texted me, said she'd be available for conversation via speakerphone should you want to talk to her.
Okay.
Would that work?
I think we can muddle through this. But keep her on view. Be ready just in case.
Yep. Okay.
So the next item again was under City Attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night. Thanks again for your feedback. As we're all aware, we completed our patrol contract for police. Right on the heels of that is our command officer contract. In your packet, you will find tentative agreement. It very closely relates to the Patrol TA, as you're all aware. So at this point, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the Command Officers Association of Michigan tentative agreement.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by O'Donnell. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. That wasn't so tough. Normally, we open the floor for communication from the public for items that are not on the agenda, but the public has left the building, so we don't have to do that tonight. So I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Deon. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.